That's when we make the presentations tonight, is that correct? She's right here behind me. So, you know, for some of us, we've been through this before. We're kind of waiting for somebody to come in and make an appearance. Do you recall that? Okay, so we call that. So Linda, thanks for being here. We'll turn the floor over to you tonight.
Well, welcome, parents and friends and everyone. This is an exciting night. I'm Linda Brawley. I'm the co-president of SMAC, the Shawnee Mission Area Council, which oversees the PTAs in our district. And tonight, we're here to award the Award of Merit and the Award of Excellence to the Citizenship Contest winners. Yeah, go ahead and have them come up. For those of you, I'm sure most of you know, but it's grades fifth through ninth. The contest is fifth through ninth. This year, we had 26 schools that participated. We had 225 poetry entries, which is great, and 1,160 essays. So you can imagine there was a lot of reading from the judges. The theme this year was, "How can you help impact your community that will be remembered 100 years from now?" That's quite a task. Yeah, and a couple of things. We will announce the, what we call the Award of Merit, which is second place winners. These are throughout the whole district. They've already won at their school level, and they're now at the district level. And then, we also will announce the Awards of Excellence. And those will not only win at this level, but they will go on to the state level, which we usually have quite a few winners at the state level, too. So it's always exciting. Let's see. I'm going to go ahead and, let's see, call everybody up. They should be in order. Kylie McAlligott is one, the Award of Merit, for fifth grade essay from Rising Star. You want to? Oh. Here, yeah. Why don't you go ahead and come up here? Yeah, sorry. Okay, okay. Yeah.
How about we just reverse the order?
Yeah, okay.
Shake your hands and then they can go over here.
Yeah. Yeah, I think we will at the end here, too.
We'll get a group photo.
Oh, okay. Sorry, we're kind of in progress.
But do we give a photo?
Oh, yeah, you want to snap a photo? Okay. Yeah, that's good. Great, all right. Go ahead and just stand right here, honey. Our fifth grade poem was from Belinda Finn Sullivan. Our sixth grade essay is from Trailwood Madeline Pilraz? Our Award of Merit, sixth grade poem is from Trailwood Chase Nash. Our seventh grade essay is from Westridge Alyssa Murray. And our seventh grade poem is also from Westridge Amelia Jarvey. Yes, our eighth grade essay is also from Westridge Sophia Terian. All right. And finally, for Award of Merit, eighth grade poem from Indian Woods is Hannah Carter. Okay, now, we're going to do the Award of Excellence. I do want to say a thank you to Dee Wright here. She's the coordinator for, at the SMAC level, for the Citizenship Contest. And she's done this for years, and she's, coordinates all the judging and the submissions, and does a wonderful job. So I'd like to say thank you to Dee. All right. For the first Award of Excellence, we have fifth grade essay from Briarwood is Lucy Harrison. Fifth grade poem is from Rising Star Ainsley Smith. Sixth grade essay is from John Deemer Ryan Nolan. And our sixth grade poem is from Mill Creek Elizabeth Coofers. Our seventh grade essay winner is from Trailridge Hunter Bremenkamp. And our seventh grade poem from Hocker Grove Grace Hughes. Our eighth grade essay is from Trailridge Jacob Wallace. And our eighth grade poem is also from Trailridge Carlos Jaime. And our seventh grade essay, or excuse me, ninth grade, they're probably, huh, ninth grade, from Shawnee Mission South Gabriel Lopez. And last but not least, ninth grade poem from, again, from Shawnee Mission South Sydney Now, if we can have all the winners, if you want to just come and do a quick group photo. Is that what you want? We've done that in the past, I know. Yeah, we'll do, if we can have all of the, yeah, just come up here. And we'll get one of you on each side.
Sure.
Are we good? Thank you to the Award of Merit winners. And now, our Award of Excellence winners, as I said, they will all be going on to state and wish them luck.
All right, let's get to your last stage. You all step forward, please. And then, you all please take a second room. And find a window. If you would, please, find a window. Great, great, great. Everybody's fine. And one more. Congratulations. Now, if anybody is interested, they may also go down and join the reception, or if you want to stay up here and listen to the podcast. Thank you. No, just the next one. Oh, okay. Thank you. We have another idea where we have a break.
Get your laptop going or whatever?
It's on.
Okay. Good evening. Thank you very much for joining us this evening. I would invite you, as we start, to stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, we will move to our first agenda item, which is the superintendent's report. Dr. Henson.
Thank you, Mrs. Zila. We have a special presentation tonight. It's always great to have partners, those entities in our community that are really interested in the well-being of our students and furthering the cause of education. And I'm going to ask Ms. Linda Roser if she would come to the microphone tonight because we have some teachers here tonight, but also some individuals from our community. And Linda, I'll allow you to make this special presentation tonight.
Thank you very much, Dr. Henson. Mrs. Zila and members of the board, good evening. I am Linda Roser with the Shawnee Mission Education Foundation, and we connect community generosity with our schools. That's my 10-second chamber introduction, and it's the reason we're here tonight, community generosity. We celebrate the 20-year partnership with First National Bank and their investment in our schools. I'd like to introduce the folks who are here from First National Bank and ask them to come on up. Dave Janis is bank president. Jen Sandborn, who will be carrying something, is the marketing manager. And Marga Spangler is the director of private client services. And Marga has been a former Smith Board Member, a Smith President, and the chairman of the Fall Breakfast. So she is deeply engaged with us, and First National Bank has loaned her her management experience to provide expertise to the foundation. So we're grateful for that. First National Bank started as a sponsor of the foundation's annual breakfast, and that partnership has grown well beyond the annual event sponsorship. Six years ago, the bank worked with our Career and Technical Education Leadership Team to develop an experiential learning opportunity for high school students. The First National Bank Business Plan Competition is a kinder, gentler, student-focused version of the Shark Tank, long before the Shark Tank was a twinkle in any television producer's eye. Every year, student entrepreneurs submit a letter of intent, develop a business plan, present their plan, and answer questions before a panel of six to eight bankers. You talk about a real-world experience. Each student pitches his or her business idea as if seeking an investment from the bank. Three students each year are awarded scholarships totaling $5,000. The foundation is part of the team that manages the post-secondary scholarships, which are awarded to sophomores, juniors, and seniors. If I can brag a moment, on our Career and Tech Ed team's work in developing the educational programming side of this, the impact is really quite far-reaching. The bank has taken the Shawnee Mission version of the Business Plan Competition Program beyond Shawnee Mission, first to Blue Valley, then to Olathe, and last year to Johnson County Community College. I say kudos are in order for our Shawnee Mission team's creativity in design and successful implementation that fostered replication. This past fall, working with Matt Johnson, First National Bank provided significant financial support to relaunch the much-anticipated and hugely-successful middle-school sports program. Over 1,000 middle-school students have already participated in cross-country, wrestling, girls' basketball, and boys' basketball. The final sport, girls' volleyball, is coming up this spring. Now, I'd like to ask Mrs. Zila, Dr. Strike, Brenda Bott, and Connie Gandy to join us up here. And let's, we can turn around. We're going to bring more people up for pictures, but right now. Okay, tonight, I am honored to announce a $20,000 grant from First National Bank and acknowledge their 20-year partnership. This $20,000 grant will purchase a carbon dioxide incubator and a digital stereo microscope for the Biotechnology Signature Program at Shawnee Mission West, instructed by Brenda Bott. The CO2 incubator introduces a new piece of equipment to the program with which students will learn the techniques to culture mammalian cells, a key component in current industry research. The grant will also purchase programmable patient simulators for the Medical Science Signature Program at Shawnee Mission North, instructed by Connie Gandy. The programmable patient simulator introduces a realistic, low-risk, high-impact learning experience in the classroom. As part of this grant award, the Shawnee Mission Education Foundation is providing a matching grant of $3,800 to purchase the SimPad programming system for the patient simulator. This investment by First National Bank contributes to the district's goal to offer industry-standard technical education to prepare Shawnee Mission students to be college and career-ready. I want to thank Dave for First National Bank's belief in the power of great education and your commitment to Shawnee Mission students. Thank you. Matt, just a second for the, I'll let Mrs. Zila say something, and then for the picture, I'd like to bring up Dean Davison, who is the president of the Shawnee Mission Education Foundation Board of Directors. And we've got principals in the room, Steve Lowe from Shawnee Mission West, and Dick Kramer from Shawnee Mission North, and I think Robert Hoffman is here from Career and Tech Ed, and Kim Barney is here for curriculum and instruction, and they are both over the two programs. So if those people could come on up, and go ahead, Deb.
Thank you. I don't know if I'm on or not here. Let's see. Up is probably on. Am I on? I don't think. If I'm not, Connie and Brenda, thank you guys so much for the wonderful programs that you offer our students on behalf of the board. We are just thrilled with what you guys do. First National Bank, you guys, I have to come around here. You guys do such wonderful things for us. And you come to bat for us so many times. Middle-school sports, Marga, thank you. Jen, thank you very, very much. This is so important to us, and obviously, I don't even know what they, this is my, and we are so thrilled that you have this great support of our school district. So thank you very, very much.
We know they'll put it to good use.
Well, indeed.
Just wait until it's 100 years, we've been partners.
That's right. I don't think we'll be here. The school will be here, the bank will be here. That's right.
Can we write that down?
What do you need?
Let's write it down.
Find a window for me, please.
Find a window.
Please, come up front.
Yes, you guys. I'll stick back here. How about that? I'll window back here.
Great, great window find, everybody. We'll take a couple, and you'll just keep those smiles going, please. I appreciate it. One more. All right. Excellent, thank you very much.
Thank you guys so much.
This month is School Board Appreciation Month, and I want to begin this evening, or continue this evening, by thanking our Shawnee Mission Board of Education members. And so each January, the Kansas Association of School Board recognizes school board members from throughout the state for the service to our students. And so I think, as probably everyone knows, there isn't any compensation monetarily speaking for school board members, and you spend a tremendous amount of time. You have to make difficult decisions in relation to the benefit of students. So on behalf of the Shawnee Mission School District community, thank you to each and every one of our school board members for your service, dedication, and commitment to the many students in our district. So maybe it's appropriate everyone in the audience can give our board members a round of applause. Laura Brogdon, recognized for several things tonight, but recently at a faculty meeting at Shawnee Mission West, Laura, a math teacher there, was recognized and given the Educating Excellence Award for this month. So the honor presented by Perceptive Software and the University of Kansas School of Engineering recognizes outstanding educators in the areas of science, technology, engineering, and mathematics. And so Laura is the representative for the month of January. So Laura, would you stand again to be recognized tonight, please? We're so very proud of you. So congratulations. The Shawnee Mission East debate team continues their record of success. Two teams from East qualified for the National Scholastic Debate Association National Tournament this December. This month, two Lancer, two-speaker debate teams. Did you get that? So two Lancer, two-speaker debate teams were victorious. One team took first place, the other took second place at the Kansas State High School Activities Association Class 6A Debate Tournament. And so you can see some pictures on the screen, but a great honor for these young men, and so congratulations to them and the entire program there at East High School. Once again, our students from throughout the district have been recognized for their excellence in journalism. This shouldn't come as a surprise to us. So the Columbia Scholastic Press Association named several publications created by Shawnee Mission students for their success. And so tonight, I really want to recognize for the Crown Award for Publications in Newspaper Yearbook and in the Hybrid category, which honors publications that combine print and digital publications into one. So the High School Newspaper Crown finalist, Shawnee Mission Northwest; the High School Yearbook Crown finalist, East Northwest and North; and the Hybrid Crown finalist, two West. And so congratulations to all of our students, and certainly to our teachers as well. It seems like on a regular basis, I'm talking about the recognition for our journalism program in the district. So a great honor again to our students and to our teachers as well. As many of you know, tomorrow is the election deadline. And so if people haven't mailed in their ballot by now, if they mail it in, it will not count in this election. So everything that is received in the election office by noon tomorrow, and that is when it is finalized, we anticipate that we will have election results late tomorrow afternoon or early evening. So that's the anticipation right now. If we have a significant response before noon tomorrow, then we would hit 30% of the 139,000-plus ballots mailed out to registered voters in the Shawnee Mission School District to be returned in a mail-in ballot. And so that's what the numbers look like at this point in time. And so again, the election results are at hand. So less than 24 hours, we trust we know the results of the two questions that we have on the ballot. Another item that I want to show to you tonight, under my superintendent's report, we continue to hear a lot about how can we put more resources in our classroom. And so tonight, I'm rolling out the new organizational chart for the school district. And so this is one phase of the organizational chart for the district. So after this meeting, we'll be posting some positions, and I'll briefly walk it through the chart with you tonight. And again, this is for your informational purposes. And so the column on the left is in relation to safety and security. It doesn't change. The second column, if you can see those, that doesn't change. That's in relation to our facilities and support services. The next column in relation to technology, that does not change either. What does change is what we do in relation to curriculum instruction, academic achievement. So we will have an assistant superintendent for instructional leadership. We will have two directors of elementary services. One of those will also serve title in early childhood education services, a director of secondary services, and then what doesn't change, other than some job duties, director of student activities and athletics, and then a director of special education. Another component will be an assistant superintendent for curriculum and assessment, and then director of curriculum and instruction is not new. We will have four coordinators of curriculum and instruction. That's a different approach for us. And then another category, which is different, an assistant superintendent for instructional support. Instructional support is exactly how it sounds. So that's business, finance, ELL, migrant, food service, health services, and some risk management services as well. Another component, which is a change, is moving professional development to human resources. The item that you're really interested in, this is an annual savings of approximately $1.5 million to the school district. It does reduce our administrative footprint and puts more resources in the classroom. So I know this is something that you've talked to me about a lot, how do we reduce our administrative footprint? And so it is approximately a $1.5 million annual savings to the school district. Now, if, and Dr. Little's going to talk to us about this a little later, if the decision-makers in Topeka keep our funding level, if we don't have a significant reduction in funding for this next school year, and as classroom space is available, because of this additional cost savings, we will reduce our pupil-teacher ratio in the school district. So this last year, we reduced our cap in K1 and 2 to 24. So what I'm announcing tonight is that the third-grade cap will go from 29 to 27. The fourth, fifth, and sixth-grade ceiling for student enrollment is currently 30, and it will go to 27. So let me go back and clarify that again. So we've gone from 26 to 24 through second grade. Third through sixth grade, the cap will now be at 27 students, instead of at third grade, 29, and grades four, five, and six at 30. So because we're reducing our administrative footprint, we do have the resources in order to reduce our class size if we don't lose millions of dollars this coming year from decisions that are made in Topeka. So we will make the preparation to reduce class size. We do have buildings that we're watching carefully and talking about, how can we move programs to free up some class size? Because as you know, in some buildings, we have capacity issues. Other buildings, we do not have capacity issues. So we will address that as the spring goes forward. So the new organizational chart, we'll post some of these positions immediately. The bottom line, it's an annual savings of approximately $1.5 million. It does reduce the number of individuals in the district making decisions. It does free up money, Topeka contingent, so we will make a significant reduction in our class size and put more of our resources back in the classroom in the school district. So I'm not finished in reducing the administrative footprint, but we'll continue along this process to do what you've asked us to do and reduce those resources going to other areas that don't directly impact the classroom. So with that, that is all the information that I have to share with you tonight, except for an introduction. And so Dr. Michelle Hubbard is with us tonight, and so Dr. Hubbard will join us officially in July. She is currently the superintendent of the Turner School District, but will join our staff in July. So welcome, Dr. Hubbard. It's great to have you here this evening. So that's what I have for you tonight.
Give her a welcome.
Thank you, Mrs. Zila.
Great, thank you, Dr. Henson. We will move on to open forum. I'll just list off the procedure for open forum here, addressing the board. The beginning of each regular business meeting, the Board of Education provides an open forum as an opportunity for public comment on school district issues. Agendas are published in advance to notify the community of the topics under consideration. Patron comments are welcome, but those wishing to speak to an issue not included in the agenda will usually not receive a response during the meeting. We have a lot going on in this meeting tonight, so I would ask our open forum speakers, we just have two, but to try to limit your comments to say five minutes, okay? And Mr. DePerro will try to watch his watch and give you a heads-up one night.
I'll give you a one-minute warning by holding up a piece of paper in case you run that.
There you go, okay. Our first speaker tonight is Amy Barnes.
I wanted to bring up my concern about internet access for low-income families. When the district first announced that students would be receiving computers in the spring, it brought up discussions at our home. And my daughter even said that one of her classrooms had discussions of the pros and cons. And the two issues that came to mind on the, of course, what I'm thinking negative side, even though it's a positive thing for our school, is how are families that currently cannot afford a computer going to have this computer? Yes, I know it's provided free, but of course, it's an item that can easily be broken or stolen, or, you know, things can happen. And I thought, well, how can they then afford to pay for something when that happens to it? My daughter says, oh, they'll have insurance. I said, wonderful. Well, then I find out when we go to register for school that that is up to each individual to pay for that insurance. And $90, 10% of the item value or approximately, that's good. And most of us here can afford that. But there is low-income families that even that is a burden. And that was a concern. Of course, I hadn't even thought, of course, internet connectivity is also a concern. So anyway, that was my concern. I let it go, forgot about it. Then about a couple months ago, we found out about a family that, and this has made it real to me. One family who was barely being able to pay for their food, I'm assuming at the end of the month, didn't have a car, was losing their electricity. Hard to have food in your house when you have no microwave, no oven, no refrigerator. So they were in a very tight spot. I'm assuming this family represents more than just themselves. I assume there's, I don't know how much more, but others that have this situation. And I also just found out recently, they didn't have internet. So the answer is let them stay after school, go to McDonald's, go to that. Well, in their situation, they didn't have a vehicle. They had no way to get their kids home from school. They found out that they got, I think they were provided busing funds, so they were able to bus their kids home, but their kids can't stay after school. Their situation could be uniquely difficult. I don't know. All I know is my heart is breaking for this family. I know, I don't know all the kids in the family. I just know the one that my daughter knows. Very good student, wants to go on and possibly college, wants to work hard, but this is a roadblock for her. Yes, the computers are good, but it's also led to a roadblock. I don't know any more details. Maybe she's worked with her teachers, maybe they give exception to her. I don't know. But she was given a name of a low-income internet provider. We called them. We found out they don't cover her area. Through more phone calls, we found another company they also don't provide. Then we found another company. It's many hours of seeking this. We finally found a company that does provide, but for way more than what we were expecting. So it's still in the works, what we're trying to figure out to solve this. You know, we can have friends continue to bring them to places that provide internet, but it's just a burden for this family. And I don't know if there's an answer. I kind of was hoping that with the money we have put into the computers, there could be some income set aside to help cover these families, you know, that need it. Maybe they offer a little bit per month, and then we cover the rest. I mean, because I think the cheapest so far that I've found is like $30 plus tax. And like I said, most of us won't flinch at that. But for people that are struggling to feed their family, that's a big concern. So I don't know if it's an easy answer. I've kind of made some calls to our computer team at our particular school, and they didn't seem to have an answer. I mean, this is a big problem, and I don't know how many people really have this need. But it makes them not have equal access to education now that we've gone to computers. So anyway, that's just, like I said, it's been made real to me with this family and kind of makes me count my own blessings. So anyway, that's just what I had to share. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Barnes. Our next speaker is Stephanie Gegen. I hope I said that right.
You said it correctly.
Did I? Good.
Hi, I'm really grateful to be here. When my friends found out that I was coming, I was barraged by emails because they were all so excited because I'm here to talk about calendaring of the school district. And I come to you first and foremost as a mom, the primary caretaker. And so I have the luxury of a lot of flexibility in my schedule to be able to move within the calendar, days on, days off, half-days, and so on. But I'm also here as a teacher. I have been a teacher for many years, and I'm currently a children's pastor. I work with children and teens in crisis, so lots of behavior. And as we look at the calendar, first of all, Shawnee Mission does so many things incredibly well. Super, it's just phenomenal. I mean, that is why we live in this school district. So I'm very grateful. Calendaring is not a forte. And I feel like this year, there have been probably more days that we have not had school than in previous years. So I'm looking at that, and I'm thinking that there might be a better way to go about calendaring. One of the first things that comes to mind is the actual start date of school seems to be getting earlier. About every three years, it seems to be a day earlier and a day earlier. And as for families, I know oftentimes, we wait until August to go on the family vacation, whether it's because of our spouses' schedules, summer school, athletics, what that looks like. But the month of August, the first two weeks, has typically been a huge family vacation month. And with the date being moved earlier, of course, the teachers really struggle with that, but also just families trying to sneak in those hiking trips and whatever it is that they're going to do. So I'm wondering if, you know, we could follow Lee Summitt's example and push the start of school back to the week of the 20th, which is what it has been, of course, in years past. Secondly, with the days on and off, half-days and so on, I understand that teacher training, especially with all the IT implementation that we've had, has been critical. And I know the teachers have really appreciated that. However, it's a huge burden on the life of the classroom, student behavior, to have an inconsistency in the school week, also in the school day. I think we've got a day off this Friday, and then we've got another Monday, and then we've got two days the week after that. And I'm wondering if we could put together a committee that would include administrators and teachers and parents to help create, shape, a calendar that would really flow well with everyone. I think that's entirely possible. I'd like to recommend that and request that. I think when we look at teachers and everything that needs to be taught, I mean, good grief, every year, they've got more and more, it seems, to teach. And we have standards of education, and, you know, I know I'm preaching to the choir, so I'll just skip all that. But there are required hours where our kids need to be educated. And I think what I'm afraid of is that we might be falling into the quantity versus quality. When we have a day off on a Tuesday instead of a Monday, it's kind of like having two Mondays in the week. So the kids are coming back into the classroom. They have to be rehabilitated, you know. Okay, kids, let's get started, let's get focused and centered. And then boom, we have another day off. And then Wednesday becomes Monday. And it's really challenging. And you see, especially in the younger grades, a real increase in behavior because they miss that inconsistency. I'm just getting started. I'm a preacher, man, I gotta preach. All right. I know that this year, for example, the full week, out of the 41 weeks of school that we have, only 18 of them were an actual full five days in the classroom. When I worked out in Blue Valley as a teacher, we, the, two of the administrators that I worked with were phenomenal. And they implemented kind of like a floating schedule so that you don't have, the preferable days for families to miss would be a Friday and a Monday, turn that into a long weekend. It's the middle of the week that really throws things out of whack. So what if we had a floating schedule where whoever's on Monday doesn't miss 23, or whatever, you know, I'm exaggerating, music classes, but would instead have that fluid schedule, which I would love to talk about, to ensure that those students on Mondays and Fridays are having the same amount of specials within their weekly schedule? And time's up. Thank you very much.
Thanks, Mrs. Gegen. Appreciate it. All right. We will move on to the approval of the minutes of the regular meeting of December 15.
Some move.
Thank you, Mrs. Bisfield. Thank you, Mrs. Goodburn. Is there any discussion or corrections? Seeing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, no. Motion carries seven zero. Approval of the minutes for the special meeting of January 12.
Some move.
That was stereo, Mrs. Mack. Dr. Denny, you want to be the second on that? Okay. Is there any corrections or additions? Okay, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, no. Motion carries seven zero. Thank you very much. Adoption of the agenda. Is there a motion for the adoption?
Some move.
Thank you, Mrs. Goodburn.
Second.
Thank you, Mrs. Lovins. Is there any discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, no. Motion carries seven zero. Approval of routine business by consent. Is there any item on the consent agenda that a board member would like removed? Mrs. Neber.
I would move approval of routine business by consent. Thank you.
Second.
Thank you, Mrs. Lovins. Is there any discussion? Okay, seeing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, no. Motion carries seven zero. That moves us ahead to the action item N, Human Resources. Dr. Henson.
Before you tonight is a recommendation to change the rate at which we pay our substitute teachers. As you know, we've probably heard quite a bit about the difficulty that all of us are having in securing the services of substitute teachers. So for the first time in many years, in proposing a current rate increase to compensate substitute teachers, so if you approve, starting February 2, our daily rate for substitute teachers would go from 120 daily to 145 daily. And then the new rate for long-term would go from 135 to 175. So it allows us to remain competitive with the other entities that were trying to secure the same individuals for substitute services. There is a cost to the school district, an estimated cost based upon the number of individuals that are actually absent from February 2 on. It will cost the district somewhere between $175,000 and $200,000 for the remainder of the school year. But it does significantly increase our rate of pay for substitutes. Obviously, the goal is to make sure that we don't have unfilled vacancies and we don't have classrooms. We're trying to pull people in from other locations because we can't find substitutes. So again, our daily rate would go from 120 to 145, and then from 135 for long-term to 175. Be happy to answer questions.
Dr. Henson, just a point of order here. I think the way I'm reading this, 120 daily to 135 daily, and then 145 long-term to 175 long-term.
That is correct.
Is that correct?
That is correct.
Very good. Is there a motion for approval?
I have a question.
Yes.
When's the last time we raised?
About '08, I think, about 2008. So it's been about seven years.
Mrs. Zela, I move approval for the increase in the substitute rate.
Aye, second. Very good. Thank you, Mrs. Mack. Thank you, Mrs. Goodburn. Is there any other discussion or questions? Okay, seeing none, all those in favor, please say aye. Mrs. Neber, did you have a question?
One quick question.
Yes.
In respect to our surrounding districts, does this now catch us up and maybe put us a little bit in the forefront? Because I know this has been a very difficult area for us to fill when teachers have, whether it be in-service days or whatever it may be.
Unless they take action based upon our action, it puts us in the lead.
Race is on. Any other questions or comments? Okay, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, no. Motion carries seven zero. We'll move on to N2. Dr. Henson.
This one does not cost any additional money, just changes some wording in agreements. So a recommendation to approval of an addendum to an employment agreement and a release. Again, there is not a cost to the school district.
Some move. Approval.
Thank you, Mrs. Bisfield.
Second.
Thank you, Mrs. Neber. Any other questions or discussion? Okay, seeing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, no. Motion carries seven zero. Action item P, Dr. Henson.
My recommendation to you tonight is the approval of the resignation of the teacher listed for you without imposition of the $1,000 resignation penalty. We've already filled that position.
Thank you, Dr. Denny. Thank you, Mrs. Goodburn. Okay, is there any discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, no. Motion carries seven zero. We'll move on to P2. Dr. Henson.
Our 2015-2016 school calendar on the agenda before you tonight. And so as we start with a school calendar each year, looking at what it will really look like for the following year, I'm going to show you the starting point for us as a school district. So the page that is in front of you on the screen tonight is a page from our collective bargaining agreement with our teachers. And so when we sit down and look at 15-16, of course, we have required minimum number of hours from the state. But we know in the top list, most of these are significant holidays. One of those, the winter break, well, Labor Day, Thanksgiving break has to be three days. Winter break is a minimum of eight weekdays, including the dates from December 23 through January 2. And then you see the dates following. And then if you'll jump to, conferences and school improvement days will be identified on an annual basis. However, the calendar will include. And so these are things that we automatically build into the calendar every year because this is a part of our collective bargaining agreement with the teachers. The first three days of the contract year for returning teachers will be in-service and classroom work. The equivalent of one of these days will be reserved for individual teacher preparations. That's built into the calendar. The first two student days are early dismissal for grades 1 through 6. That is built into the calendar. Kindergarten orientation will be held on the first two student days. That's why kindergartners don't start until the third day. The end of the first quarter will be a teacher work day. So the calendar has that built in. The last day before winter break will be a work day for K8 and early release for 9-12. The first day of semester 2 will be a full day without students and will be a half in-service and half work day. The last day of the third quarter will be a work day for K8 and an early release for teachers K12. The last student day is early dismissal. The last contract day for teachers, no students. And the Tuesday of the week, progress reports are due during each of the four quarters will be an early release for teacher work day. Progress reports will be due no earlier than the next day. So this is the binding agreement we have. And so these things are automatically built into the calendar when we start because these items currently are not options for us to change. So if you'll look at the calendar for 15-16, you will see that all of those considerations have been put into place, starting with August, the school start date. You'll see in September, we have Labor Day. October, you can see we have conferences that occur there. We also have progress reports that are due. And so you'll see those variances. You get into November, you see the three days, the Christmas, the break that's billed in, and then the K8 and the 9-12 for early dismissal. You get into January, and you see some of the same considerations, the first day back, the holiday. February, we get into conferences and a holiday as well. We do have in that we will have a five-day spring break. That is built into the calendar. April looks pretty good, except for the 19th. That's an early release on that Tuesday afternoon. That is in our agreement. And then we get into the month of May. We were able to move some dates around, so we have five more, I believe it's five more full weeks, five days of school than we had this year. And so that's something that we diligently try to control. But as you look at the individual breakdown in the middle, which gives it by August, and this is the narrative form, September, October, most of these are built in, and they are in our collective bargaining agreement. So you do not have the option of changing these things in the contract currently. So the calendar before you meets all of the requirements for a minimum number of attendance hours by the state, and so that's what we're presenting to you this evening. Questions, comments for us?
I remember when I had a high schooler that they had finals after the winter break period, which caused all kinds of havoc as far as they don't study over winter break, I have found. So I am assuming that is the reason that we start when we start.
It allows us to have two distinct semesters, one prior to the holiday break and then one following the holiday break. It also allows us to try to equalize as much as possible the number of days in each quarter. They aren't identical, but you don't want a disparate number of days in each quarter. So for example, the third quarter, you wouldn't want 51 days and then 38 days in the second quarter. And so we try to make those matches as much as possible.
Right. Mrs. Neighbors?
I also, I also remember that part of our consideration when we did the moving around and were getting out in May was, when we were going longer, teachers were having a hard time being able to do summer school that they need to do. So it wasn't just the students, but the end date for school was later.
Mrs. Neighbors.
That was my comment.
Great. Mine's think alike. Any other comments from board members?
I just have a comment. It's just very difficult. And I have heard from a number of families, some of the comments that we heard in open forum tonight, and it is very difficult. It's also difficult on our employees who have children, and then they have to provide childcare for their children on a half-day during the week, et cetera. So with that comment in mind, because of the reasons set forth, I move approval.
Okay. Thank you, Mrs. Mack. Thank you, Mrs. Fisfield. Is there any further discussion? Mrs. Neighbors.
I know it's not much consolation, but I have four children, and I had them in elementary, middle school, high school, and college. The only thing I can tell you is college does not have PTA. But their schedules are still all different. So it's a very hard thing to plan, but I think we, as a board, try to take all of those concerns into the decisions that we make. But we do have obligations also to our teachers and our staff as far as dates that we can't work with.
Any other comments? Okay. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. Motion carries seven zero. Now we will move on to the approval of many board policies from number 3 to number 90, I believe. This is the second reading for these policies. Just to bring you up to date, we had a policy audit by the Kansas Association of School Boards, so we are revising our policies to fit more a format that they recommend. So we are going through our entire policy book. So we are doing massive quantities of policies each board meeting. We have a policy task force that has done an excellent job of vetting all of those changes for us. And I would ask if there's a motion for approval for the second reading for numbers P3 through P90. This is the second reading. Mrs. Neighbors.
So moved.
Thank you.
Second.
Thank you, Mrs. Mack. Is there any discussion?
Mrs. Lovins.
Mrs. Lovins, I'm sorry. There's a voice from over here. Thank you. Is there any discussion on these policies? These have been had a first reading at the previous meeting in December. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? No. Motion carries seven zero. That will move us to the policies of the first reading, starting with number 91 through number 125. Is there any comments or any questions on any of those policies? This is a first reading for these policies. Our task force has done a great job. Again, thank you so much for all your work of going through each and every one of these. We appreciate it very much. And we will address those as a second reading at the next meeting. That moves us on to reports of the board. Dr. Henson?
Dr. Little, thanks for being here tonight. It's a little calmer here than it is in Topeka, I'm sure. As you know, Dr. Stuart Little is lobbyist for the Shawnee Mission School District. Dr. Little's in a very tough spot on a daily basis, and so I rely heavily on his information that he provides to us, his expertise. And so Stuart, thanks for being here tonight.
I'm happy to. I was looking forward to individual motions on 120. That'd buy me a little more time. Where you all out, but, and Mr. DePiro can wave the paper whenever you want me to stop as well. I'd be happy to have some.
You have free latitude. I'm sorry.
All right. Well, thank you, Mrs. Neila and Dr. Henson. I'm happy to be back again and starting another legislative session. I think this is my 10th legislative session working for you all, so thank you, and I hope you, we survive this one. I put together reports for you often, and I come and talk a few times a year and give you all updates, particularly as the legislative session gets going. This is one of those reports where I have frankly more questions than answers, and, but I certainly will air those with you all and take input and make sure that I'm watching the things you all are interested in and want to provide you just in general an update on what's going on and what I think's going to be happening. The budget process is working its way through. The governor's proposal to address the 240-odd million, 80 million shortfall this year is going to start getting worked this week in legislative committees. It will set the course for how we address in the next two years of the legislature's attempt to address the revenue shortfall. And school finance obviously is tied up in this, and it's going to be an important part of what I talk about. But as the budget process gets going, I think one thing to note is how the current-year budget gets resolved kind of in the next couple of weeks, because that has to get done fairly quickly, will have an impact on how we go down school finance, because if they make decisions on budget and set funding there, they've kind of laid the groundwork that we are going to be talking about significant changes to the school finance formula, because they're all kind of tied up together. If you're not spending money to fit your budget, you're putting yourself down a path of making some finance decisions. I would note as well, on the first page before I talk about the school finance issues, elections, moving of elections has been a significant issue for us. It has been a significant issue in the legislature. I reported over the summer, the interim committee, there was an interim legislative committee, joint House and Senate, that talked about moving elections, and they did not recommend legislation, but certainly the evidence that they received over the summer and from a variety of other states showed that moving elections from spring cycles to fall cycles does have a significant impact on turnout. Turnout will increase greatly, I think roughly, from a variety of the states. You went from local elections in the spring in that 10% to 18% range up to the 35% to 45% range. And so I would anticipate, there's no bill yet, but I would anticipate that there will be a bill that will have a lot of legislative support that will move spring elections to the fall election cycle. I suspect the way the conversations have gone, those will go in odd-numbered years, so they'll be not with legislative elections, not with presidential elections, but they'd be in odd-numbered years. And there has been not a great deal of support for making them partisan or for monkeying around with districts and making school districts have to have at-large elections and those kind of things. There's just enough division around those issues that I don't think that will happen, but I would certainly suspect that there will be legislation and lots of support for moving to a fall odd-year, nonpartisan cycle.
Can I ask a question?
Yes, of course. Mrs. Neighbors.
You know, this just, I just thought of this, and I hope you don't mind me asking this question. The state has the authority to tell local entities how and when they will have their elections, and I'm wondering under what authority does the state have to tell local entities how to have their elections?
Well, I'm not an attorney, but I think it is, within their statutory purview, I would suspect to set those election dates, but I'm, I mean, I don't know we would have gone down this far.
Right.
If there was no underlying legal authority for them to do so. That may be a challengeable issue, though, however, so.
Mrs. Neighbors.
Has anybody expressed what this does as far as seating those people in their positions? Because our new members come on July 1. City Council is the meeting after the election, so that may not be as affected, but this certainly changes how that is done. There's a long waiting period now. That would make it really long.
For?
Seating board members. Right now, we're seated July 1. We have an election in November.
Oh, I don't think it delays the seating of the elected officials.
It's not delaying it. It elongates it. Because right now, we're not seating anybody before July 1, because that's our fiscal.
Our fiscal year begins.
Right. No, I would suspect that, I believe in the bills from last year, that the new positions would take over in January 1, in the middle of the year.
Right. But see, that's in the middle of our school year.
And I understand, yes.
And I know you understand this, too.
And that changes, that would have to do with changing some local law that I don't know if they've researched. So while it may be only a date to them, it certainly changes some of the local laws that people need to be aware of, and I don't know if they've looked at that. That might be a subject of.
I spoke with a legislator that I said, you know, because that would seat them mid-year of our school year, and July 1 gives them a little bit of head start to learn about the school district before the school year actually begins. And I said, how would you feel if you were seated in your position in February after the session had begun? I mean, you would have to play catch-up and things, so. And they said, hm, I hadn't thought of that. So I'm sure that you've brought this to their attention, if I know you still.
And there have been, and on behalf of the statewide local government organizations and School Board Association, we've, all those issues have been raised, and I think for a lot of legislators, it is difficult for them to look at voter turnout in spring elections and look at voter turnout in fall elections and say that that is beneficial for communities, to have that low of a level of a turnout in a spring election.
Do they have statistics on fall elections for just local elections? Or is it, I mean, is it presidential gubernatorial elections that they do in the fall?
The nonpartisan National Conference of State Legislators came in and gave a full presentation over two days to the legislative committees and talked about a wide variety of different states that had these systems in place for a long time, those that had transitioned in over time, that had just local and off-cycles. And you are correct in that out of the big statewide national election cycles, the turnout is lower if it's just local elections, but still fall elections, just because of the weather and mentality and the psychology of voting, those August-November dates do increase turn, do have a greater turnout, even when it's just local elections.
I would wonder, I would wonder, too. We've had discussion tonight of families taking vacations, the first part of August. I'm sorry, but I don't think as many people vote then as normally vote. I mean, we have, unless it's a spring break, most of our people are home, and we don't vote over spring break. So that opportunity for more people to be available is certainly here. More people are going to be out of town in August unless they want to move it later, and I know they don't want to do that. That might be a subject also. If they want more people at the polls, then move it later.
Did you have a comment, Mrs. Goodburn?
Have they had any discussion about having alternative voting methods, like mail-in ballot?
Well, mail-in ballot is one that tends to generate the most participation. If you do mail-in ballots, there's cost issues related to that that they raised questions about, and I, they've never really had a lengthy discussion of mail-in ballots, but that was part of the general discussion. The thing that they were spending a lot of time on was a process that's used in a variety of other states called ballot on demand, where rather than having a whole bunch of precincts that people would go to, there would be some centralized number of locations where you would walk in and you would say, this is my address, and they would print you out a ballot. Because the ballot problem, the permutations of city, local, state, school boards, ballot questions, local tax issues, all those kinds of things, they, if they have it all on a computer, you could go in and say, this is my address, this is my proof of citizenship, and you would get a ballot printed out that fit where you lived. And in places that use that, that has an impact on turnout because, and on efficiency and cost savings, but that's nothing that they were interested in going that far. And at this point, it's moving the date that they've spent their time on, and that's kind of what they've confined themselves to.
Mrs. Neighbors?
Well, I think you answered my question, because if we are regulated by the state, we are created by the state, even though we are voted on locally. I mean, when I think of all the state statutes that regulate school boards, that's why they can tell us when our, Dr. Henson is shaking his head, yes, that's why they can tell us about our local elections. The second part, the question that I had, if I recall, last year, the year before, some of the discussions that legislators were having would radically change Shawnee Mission School District voting, because it wouldn't be by area representative. Is that correct? And have you heard anything about that?
There was, okay. There had been a couple of proposals that were talking about all at-large districts, and so there would not be any district-specific representation. The, and this is going to require me to recall, one of the bills that actually was much more significant, and I'll count on anybody to re-enlighten me about this, but there are three different tiers for voting in school district elections in terms of whether you, I'm trying to recall, and we were in that kind of third tier, as far as the Plan C and 1C. And this would have moved us up into Plan B where the, if I, you people that run the election know this better than I do.
It's primaries in your area, primaries in your area, and then it's an at-large vote, I believe, or something like that.
Right. That's right. It has to do with that primary stage, because you'd still have the district system and then at-large as you wanted to, but it would change that process, through the primary process.
Because the local legislators that we've talked, some of the local legislators that I've talked to, were talking about the horrible weather in the spring as opposed to the horrible weather in the fall, as their major reason for supporting legislation, changing it all to the fall. I was like, you live in Kansas, you don't know what you're going to get, but I thought that was interesting, interesting, as their primary reasoning.
There's a lot of different stories, all leading down that same path. People come from a lot of different angles, and frankly, some of them are very determined people who want these partisan, and want them to be partisan elections, and, you know, you move to a fall cycle and you get into the election cycle, and then two years from now, there's lo and behold, another bill, hey, you know, everybody's more used to partisan than they are nonpartisan, let's go down that. So, you know, that's, those things are always lurking on the horizon.
I know. I think that's our biggest contention.
Yeah.
Absolutely, is that they will lean towards partisan at some point, which I think has no place in the school boards whatsoever, so.
Other than the Secretary of State and the Chairman of the Republican Party, there's been no other people that have showed up at any of the hearings at any point last year over the summer, or even this spring at an informational briefing, who have been asking for partisan elections, so.
Sorry to belabor that point, but that's a bone of contention, I think, with this.
Well, I understand. And we haven't even got school finance yet, so.
Oh, right.
But that's.
Happy news.
Well, yeah. That's the quick update on the election cycle. I included for you all in the report a couple of pages that briefly described the governor's proposal, that talk about the new school finance formula and then the legislative reaction, and I'll go over, I do not mean to take too much time, so you just tell me when I need to wrap up. As you all are aware, the governor has a proposal in that he made in a State of the State address to eliminate the school finance formula, repeal it for two years, have a block grant that would send the same amount of money out to school districts. It would block grant most of the large state general fund appropriations that come out. School districts would have the flexibility to spend those how you wanted to. They would not be bound by the constraints that may come with them. What it would do over the next two years is it would frankly freeze every school district at the level of funding that you received in 2015, so you wouldn't get increases for two years. It would, the State Department of Education, since the proposal was made, has looked at the numbers, and essentially statewide, it'd be about a cut of $127, $129 million in each year, because they're not fully funding every component of it. There's some dollars that are taken out. So you're, we're being frozen in at 2015, which doesn't have are taken out. So, we're being frozen in at 2015, which doesn't have increases for some of the caseloads, doesn't equalize funding for capital outlay, does for bond and interest and LOB. But those will be frozen in for the next two years as well. And so, you basically live with 2015 for the next two years. Student count goes up and down, at-risk goes up and down. There are no adjustments, any of those kinds of things, so.
There's a $44 million debt that school districts are going to have to come up with for CAPERS, because they're not going to put anything in it. So they cannot say it stays the same. Because right here, 44 million in statewide funding increases in CAPERS will not be paid by the state. Districts will be responsible. So that's 88 million when you look at it over two years.
Right. It is, it is described as flat funding. It is not technically completely dollar-for-dollar, even flat funding. That's absolutely correct. And I wanted to make sure that that was in here, so you all would see that. I think the biggest challenge right now is, when you eliminate the formula, what do you eliminate? You eliminate, the governor said, all the waitings are gone. So if all the waitings are gone, does that include new facilities? Where is the local option budget in this? The declining enrollment provisions for small rural school districts? Where's low enrollment waiting? All those kinds of, all of those components that we're used to talking about in the school finance formula since 1992 would be repealed in this proposal, the way it's laid out there. Now, what I will tell you is that there are conversations going on within legislative leadership with the governor's office about what the block grant will look like. I've been meeting and talking with our legislators and legislators who are involved in this. And clearly, they understand you can't eliminate the local option budget. That's, you know, $600 million statewide that would come out of the system. And so what's going to eventually come out in the block grant proposal will have some of those components of the current system in the block grant, because those are simply means to access kind of the core of funding for a lot of school districts, us included. But the waitings, those parts of the formula would not be part of the block grant. They're going to, I think, keep the things that drive the funding sources, but those waitings that redistribute dollars within the formula, or distribute dollars within the formula, are going to go away in the block grant proposal. There's nothing in writing, there's nothing that's been circulated. This is still being discussed. You know, it's, we had a 90-day session, and we're now, you know, close to, you know, two and a half weeks into it. So it's going to take some pretty quick work to reach that point. But there's most likely going to be a block grant, particularly if the rescission budget, that current, your budget passes, and they start moving down the road. They will be working diligently to get the block grant into place and figuring that out. At some point, it'll have to be rolled out in writing. We'll have hearings. There'll be opportunity for input and those kinds of things, formal input and those kinds of things. What, the second part of this is the new school finance formula. The governor's talked about the block grants buys basically two years, maybe one cycle, to come up with this new school finance formula, and to put it out to the legislature for action. The folks that are working on the block grant at the same time are having conversations about what the new formula would look like. I think essentially, everything is on the table for what a new school finance formula might look like. Everything will be debated. They don't technically have to have the formula done by this year. That's part of passing the block grant. That's something that we'll likely have interim committees on, that will go and look through that, and be prepared to deal with it next legislative session. Of course, next, nothing like a good school finance fight, and next legislative session, we're looking at elections again. And so that's going to keep it interesting. So there may be something that comes out before the legislative session's over. But the first thing we're looking for is the block grant, see what that's going to look like, how that's put together. And then there'll be the school finance formula coming out, maybe this session. That, it's a hard thing, you know, you guys have, most of you have been around through these kinds of things, and you don't pass the school finance formula very quickly or very easily. So.
Mrs. Mac?
When they did the court case on Dr. Little, they did, one of the issues was equalization, because we had a lot of districts that couldn't build anything. And that was a large premise for the school finance suit. So now they're going to take that away. Is there any kind of immediate impact that could be taken on the part of the courts, that they are in defiance of that court order?
You're correct. And one of the capital outlay equalization is not funded in this, and that was one of the tenants of the equity issue that was addressed in the bill last year. And I'll talk about the courts. You've still got an issue here down at the district court level. The Supreme Court will be reviewing this. And I think the Supreme Court will certainly be reading very carefully what the legislature does finally approve. And I think, you know, that's going to be a decision that they make, whether, I think part of it will depend on what the block grant looks like, what the legislature does and talks about in terms of intent. Is the intent to come up with something that addresses all of the, all of those questions? And the Supreme Court may, you know, may take any number of avenues, including you didn't do what you told us you'd do just a year ago. So I think it's all, we're in kind of uncharted territory here.
Yeah. There's no formula, there's nothing looking worse.
I'll talk a little bit about legislative reaction, because I think one thing that's important in Topeka is to try to convey back to you all a sense of how this is getting talked about over there. Because it is, what we can read in the papers, kind of an interesting version of it. But legislative committees have been getting briefings on the Gannon decision from the district court. There has been a great deal of criticism, as one would expect from a wide variety of people, about the Gannon decision, talking about school districts getting equalization like us this year, and that wasn't what anybody intended, and how did that happen? And then, I think one of the big sources of frustration, the legislature passed the school finance bill last year, added 120-odd million to the formula, and said, we're equalizing, we're going forward. And then, in November, when the kind of education caseload estimates come out, and you've got more students, and you've got more students at risk, and the formula says, we need X amount of more dollars, and it's about $50 million, the legislature shows back up in January and says, we just paid $129 million. Why do we owe another $50 million? And they think that that's leading to a lot of conversation about the formula is inherently flawed, or people are gaming the system, or those kinds of things. For years, that's how the system worked. You came back, you had more students, you had more at-risk, the legislature added money. This is, and people grumbled about it in some prior sessions. But this is the first time, I think, in light of, and it all comes back to revenue and budget, when you don't have money to do those kind of things, and you did in the past, the legislature would fund those, governor would recommend them, and they would go through. And this is the first time that we're having a fight about that. And that's fueling a lot of this kind of conversation, that there, people are beginning to see those cost drivers in the formula. It's also leading to a lengthy discussion about at-risk definitions, about all those kinds of components of the formula, fund balances. It's feeding a lot of small conversations that have taken place over the last couple of years, that are kind of ending up in a very, at this point, a very strong discussion, conversation about, yes, we're interested in changing the formula, yes, we'll go with a block grant and see how that looks. And everybody talks about that in January, probably about halfway through February. And then when it gets to March, and people have to start voting on things, it's going to get a little more challenging, because when you start looking at a block grant, I mean, theoretically, there's a block grant that says you can, you can't have your, you know, hopefully sustaining a 33% local option budget, and we only have the resources to equalize at 28%. So all you can have in this block grant is 28%. All of a sudden, there's a big change. You have a block grant formula that eliminates low enrollment waiting for small rural districts. That doesn't show up in the formula. All of a sudden, people who wanted a block grant and changed the formula may not like that. And so, once all of this comes together, it's going to get more confusing, not clearer. But, you know, we're going to have to wait and see how those, how all of those things play out. So we're waiting on the block grant, see what that looks like.
Oh, Dr. Denny, I'm sorry.
I just, you kind of live over there daily. What's your sense of how connected or cohesive the Johnson County delegation is? Are they kind of on the same page when it comes to education? Or is there still some division amongst the delegation?
Thank you for asking that question. You know, we have a broad range of legislators from Johnson County, and representing what are really some very diverse interests of the school district, of the variety of school districts here in the county. And I think that there are, between both extremes, we have a variety of people who want us to be more efficient, who want us to live within some definable resources that exist. And I still believe there is a core, no matter where you end up in that spectrum, about how you feel about schools, from pretty far one way and pretty far another way, everybody does understand that the school district is the strength of what drives people here, brings people here, keeps people here, and keeps the economic engine running. And I don't suspect, in the long run, that members of the Johnson County delegation are going to do things to damage that. And I do, even from some people that you would be, I'm not going to name anybody, but you would be surprised, they understand that's how, that's why we are where we are right now. How we get there, what they're willing to do to support that, that's where you get into the question.
I think I heard a legislator speak about comments that they might have heard from legislative research in years past, where, without naming names, legislative research says, you know, some of the folks in the delegation sort of gave away the farm years from back. And I think that our delegation needs to be a little bit tougher, and a little bit more together, when it comes to some of the decisions. We'll see as these bills move through, and see what they look like. Thank you.
I think that's what a lot of people around the state fear, frankly, is if our folks are together on a lot of stuff. There, I think there are some very beneficial things that can be done. We have had, in the Shawnee Mission School District legislative platform, since I've represented you all, changed the school finance formula. And that is, and we're going to be very, I'm going to, on your behalf, be very mindful about what that looks like, and make sure you all know, so that I can make sure and convey that to folks. But that's, and it's not without some anxiety, maybe the right word. We're waiting on the block grant, waiting on a proposal, school finance proposal that may come out. I will mention one last thing about the district court decision. That has to be appealed by the 30th, I think, of this month, to the state Supreme Court. The Kansas Attorney General on Thursday, I believe, last week or Friday, filed a motion with the district court to ask them to produce, to modify their order, and ask them to produce upon what information they made their decision. The formula is unfunded. They were directed by the Supreme Court to say, give us an analysis, do a study, figure out what, how the school finance formula should be funded. And the district court chose to say, you heard everything you needed to hear in the case at the Supreme Court level, and we're not going to do anymore. The Attorney General has gone back and asked them to kind of articulate that a little more clearly. I suspect before the 30th, there will be an appeal filed to the Supreme Court. So, there are a lengthy number of bills in here. I've talked long enough. I'm happy to answer any questions about those bills. We don't have a lot of immediate hearings coming up. We're still kind of in that early phase of a lot of bills. But all of, a lot of things that we've watched before, Common Core, prohibition, repeal of the Common Core, a lot of classroom things are coming up. A lot of the, two of the recommendations from the K-12 Commission about efficiency audits, and the Rose standards are in here in bill form. I'm happy to answer any specific questions about bills, but I don't want to.
Just one real quick one. Does it concern you, I think I recall seeing that the bill to get rid of Common Core came out of a different committee. It wasn't education, it was a federal?
Bill came out of Federal and State Affairs Committee in the House.
Does that concern you at all? Because?
Federal and State Affairs is one of the exempt committees. On the House side, House Tax, no, not House Tax, House Appropriations and Federal and State Affairs are exempt from the bill introduction deadlines. And so, if a bill's passed through education, it comes out of Education Committee, and it doesn't pass the First Chamber by the midpoint, which is January, or February 28th, then it can't be heard. So this is introduced to an exempt committee, so it can be worked on through the whole session.
And next year.
Any other questions?
I just had one quick one. Hopefully, it's a quick question and a quick answer. The alcohol and tobacco taxes that the governor has proposed, has that gotten legs in Topeka? Are people behind that? Or is that, I'm just wondering what the flavor is of that one?
It is part of the proposed solution. They had a briefing on it today. And I, I still, I believe at this point in the legislative session, it's going to be part of the solution. So yes, I think in some capacity, it will be passed.
Any other questions? Dr. Little, thank you very much.
Sure. Thank you.
Appreciate it. We will move on to petty cash. Dr. Hinson?
Nothing unusual in the petty cash report. It's pretty normal.
Okay. Any questions by board members? Okay. Move on to activity funds.
Once again, no variance, nothing really outstanding at all.
Did anyone have any questions on that one?
An outstanding would be in an unusual or peculiar way, not in a bad way.
Okay. Thank you. And the board financial report?
Right on target again, for this time of the school year. And so you can see the percent received. So, very appropriate place for this time of the school year.
Very good. Any questions or comments on the financial report? Very good. We will move on to board comments. Mrs. Mac?
I would just like to take this opportunity to thank Dr. Hinson and his cabinet and his staff for looking at our finances, taking a deep and broader look to see what we can do to be more efficient, but at the same time, continue to provide the best quality education for our students. Just listening to Dr. Stewart's report tonight, I think the next two years will be very challenging. And without making some of the tough decisions that we are looking at now, we could be in worse shape. And I think there will be districts that will have a lot more problems, depending on how, not to be negative, but to see how block grants come out, and what districts, it's not going to be a win-win for everybody. It may not be a win-win for anybody. So, I think the more we do our homework, the more we work with our community, the more we let you know what we are doing, why we are doing it, so that your children, your kids, are the reason that we are here. And we want to do the very, very best we can with what we have and what we have to work with. But we need your support in understanding what our limitations are. Thank you.
Thanks, Mrs. Mac. Anyone else? Mrs. Mac?
I just have a couple of quick things. This is the Johnson County Community College magazine. And this is Debbie Allen, who is our resource person for arts here in the Shawnee Mission School District. And the Kennedy Center and the Johnson County Community College in the Shawnee Mission School District are partnering. The Kennedy Center is in Washington, DC, and it pairs art organizations with school districts as part of its Partners in Education program. It limits the number of partnerships to only 100 across the country, and it divides applications only once every two years. Johnson County Community College in Shawnee Mission is one of 11 partnerships inaugurated in April, and is the only one in Kansas at this time. So I wanted to highlight that. And, because I know there's some other arts things happening this week that are pretty exciting at different high schools. But before, I let Mrs. Goodburn, I hope she talks about that, is spending some time in some of our elementary schools is extremely rewarding. And we've had a lot of, it's really fun to learn what the kids are thinking about the one-to-one initiative. And I, this is from one of our elementary schools newsletters. It talks about Khan Academy, talks about Lexia Reading, talks about MyOn Reader. And it is so fun to watch these students differentiate, have differentiatal, different, how do you say?
Differentiated.
Yes, that word. Learning, because when they are done with an assignment, they can go on and do something else. And it's, it is thrilling to watch these, the students just take off in different areas that they have interest in. And I'm And I'm, I'm extremely proud of the decision that we made to go to one-to-one learning. It's making a huge difference in lives of our students and their families, so I just wanted to bring that to your attention.
Thank you. Mrs. Goodburn?
Well, I will speak to Oliver, with a little bit of prompting. Thursday, Friday, and Saturday, and Shawnee Mission North is putting on Oliver. In fact, I think the first dress rehearsal, no, I'm sorry, dress rehearsal is Saturday. The first performances for lots and lots of elementary kids tomorrow and Wednesday at school. Those are all sold out, though, and they're for the elementary kids, so adults can't go to those. Starting Thursday, Friday, and two shows on Saturday, so it's, it is an exciting time, especially around my household, and pay attention to Mr. Brownlow. But, but anyway, yeah, it's, it's exciting, and you can get tickets, I'm sure, at, in, at the schools, and again, our patrons can get a gold card and go for free, so.
Mrs. Neighbors?
Also at North, both of our drama teachers were inducted into, I think, about the highest level of the drama area you can get into. And North has been around for a long time with more, more plays and ART presentations than most any of, any other schools in the state, although some in Shawnee Mission, there's some competition there. But the quality of what they do and where those students go is absolutely phenomenal. So, if you've never had the opportunity, please take the opportunity to go see Oliver. And the nicest thing is, it incorporates so many of our young elementary students. So, really, this is a district project, not just a high school project. So, for $10, it's entertainment that you, that's well, well worth it, so.
Oliver, two fourth graders that are sharing the role.
Ah, great. And I think that's the Kansas Thespian Hall of Fame that you were alluding to for those two drama teachers there.
I had, all of my children had them as instructors on your floor.
And I would just like to reiterate, efficiency and money to the classroom is something that we hear a lot about, and I think tonight you heard how we were, Dr. Hinson proposed lowering the, the cap on grade levels, and so classroom sizes will get smaller, and that is definitely money to the classroom. And we are very, very cognizant, cognizant of that, and that is our goal, to get that money to our students for their absolute achievement. With that, Mrs. Goodburn?
I move that the Board of Education recess to executive session in order to discuss personnel matters regarding non-elected personnel and to discuss matters relating to employer-employee negotiations. The meeting will reconvene at 9:25.
25.
No further business will be conducted following the executive session.
Second? Thank you, Mrs. Mac. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Pose no. Question carries. Thank you very much for coming this evening.